Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 2nd, 7:00 PM. We're in regular session tonight, and we'll be reading a series of ordinances. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. We have five of our seven council members present tonight, and we will do business. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held December 17th, 2020. If I could have a motion for approval.
Motion.
We have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next, we have communications. And if there are communications from any council members, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd just like to announce that the Environment and Sustainability Commission will be meeting on the first floor of this building on this Wednesday night, March 4th, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Other council members with announcements? Yes, Councilmember Claude Felder.
Um, next Wednesday, Wednesday of next week, I will be having my second city council chat. If anyone would like to talk individually to a city council member, I will be meeting at 5:30 at the Village Bakery, and anyone who has come to, is welcome to come to talk about an idea, a concern, or a question with me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. New month, the next Athens City School Board meeting, that'll be on March 19th, 6:30 PM. This is a regular board meeting at the Athens High School Auditorium.
Okay, thanks. Any other communications? All right, we'll move on to communications and reports from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason and his auditor, Heck, I don't believe she's here tonight. Mayor Patterson.
Just a couple of things this evening in the city council. All of you have in front of you, I know Scott Thompson gave you a copy of the press release that has come out from the Athens City County Health Department. And so, that's there for you. We will make sure we get this up on the city's website, as well as pushing it out through all of our social media channels. This being, of course, an update on what the Health Department is doing and their preparedness when it comes to the coronavirus, or COVID-19, as it's called. A couple of things that Jack Pepper, the administrator for the Athens Health Department, has put together for me, there's kind of three main approaches that they're taking at this point. One is prevention. Prevention is, a lot of you have probably heard, but it's never, it can't ever repeat this too many times, and that is, you know, protecting yourself, washing your hands for 20 seconds, 10 to 20 seconds, you know, while you're washing your hands, just say the alphabet to yourself, of course, or out loud if you want to share with others. Social distancing, if you know that someone is coughing or sneezing, or whatever, six-foot radius around you or anybody else. And if you're not feeling well, stay home, you know, and seek medical attention if need be. Some of the simple things, again, coughing or sneezing into a tissue, you know, so that it's not being distributed all over the place. Preparedness is another thing that the, can the Health Department is already prepared for. They've been practicing in a formal way since 2001 for situations like this. You know, you may be familiar with SARS, and after that was MRSA and other things, MERS, rather. So, they're, they feel very confident in the level of training they've gone through. They've been planning, created plans specific to paramedics, and then they've got specific staff to lead in a variety of situations, in particular with this, the coronavirus, and any other outbreak for that matter, and then resources. You know, if you're unsure about something, always feel free to look up, go to their website at the Athens City County Health Department, or their social media platforms for accurate and up-to-date information on this particular virus. Travel plans should be adjusted according to the CDC's travel guidance. So if you're traveling somewhere, make sure you check in with that to see what's going on globally and nationally, for that matter. And then, the Athens County and City, City and County Health Department also is in constant communication with local municipalities, local universities, and state agencies. We just met with the Health Department last Friday and had a very long briefing as to the way they are approaching things. And, so there you have it, you know, stay informed, as opposed to being misinformed about what's going on, so.
And we do have that information on the website already, so thanks to the government channel for posting it.
Outstanding.
So, Councilmember Paul.
And I would say that the County Board of Health has an excellent explainer on their website with what you need to do, with cartoons and everything. I think that is an important thing. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Claude Felder.
And I'm just wondering how much detail the Public Health Department is willing to share at this point about their plans for quarantine beds, or if they're going to be able to get testing kits, or are they going to have enough supplies for the medical workers in town, things like gowns and gloves, as well as masks? Any, are they able to provide any kind of detail along those lines at this point?
I'm sure if anybody has a question of that nature, you can certainly reach out to the Health Department and speak to Dr. Gaskell or to Ruth Dudding, and they will get you whatever information you need when it comes to specifics like you just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
The other item that I had, I will be attending the National League of Cities Conference this weekend. It starts on Saturday, so I'll be embedded with all activities NLC-related. I will be cutting my trip short. I was supposed to be there through Wednesday. I'm going to be cutting the trip short because the Mayor's Partnership for Progress is having their Legislative Day up in Columbus, and we were just informed that we will have 45 minutes of Governor Dewine's time at that meeting. So, I will be leaving DC early to come back because I really want to engage with the governor on a sundry of different items. So, there you have it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
We now have ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 820 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13119, the 2020 staffing levels, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. We have, this is the third reading, and we have discussed this. This changing in the staffing levels really comes from a reorganization at the Arts, Parks and Recreation Department, including the hire by the Service Safety Director of Mr. Andrew Cheeky, who was the Assistant Director at Arts, Parks and Recreation. And so, I'll just read the pertinent sections here. We are amending the staffing level ordinance to change the cemetery position from a recreation labor supervisor to a Parks Maintenance Division Manager, a recreation position from labor supervisor to Parks Maintenance Division Manager, the position of Assistant Director to Facilities Operations Division's Manager, and the recreation positions of a Maintenance Specialist 1 and Maintenance Specialist 2 to a simple Recreation Maintenance Specialist, and then removing the position of Pool Manager. And that's it. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. And that's.
A motion to approve ordinance 0820.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Any questions or comments from council members, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2120 is an ordinance closing certain streets in the Uptown area for the International Street Fair, Cruze Inns, it's the Street Fair, Cruze Inns, Brew Week, and Bounty on the Bricks. I need to get used to all the combination of them. This is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 02120.
Second.
And so, this is, this is a combination of a couple of our annual events that happen uptown. So, the first one, the International Street Fair, that closure will be on Saturday, April 4th. It is East Union Street between Court Street and University Terrace. The other, the second series are the Cruze Inns. Remember, these happen on Friday evenings from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and they, they impact Court Street between Washington and State Street. The dates for those are Friday, May 29th, Friday, July 31st, and Friday, September 11th. Let's see, and then the Brew Week, let's see, we have the closure of West State Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, July 11th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then, the closing ceremony is Court Street between Washington and Carpenter, and that will also include portions of State Street, Congress, and College to also be closed, and that is Saturday, July 18th. And then, the last one on this, on this ordinance is the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser by Ohio Health. That is happening on Saturday, August 1st, and involves Court Street between Union and Washington Street.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any questions or comments from council members? Yes, admin, first, Councilmember Paul.
I think that the process now is much better, and the combining of all the calendar events and stuff, and I want to say thank you to Andrew Cheeky, and his new job is doing awesome. Thank you.
Okay. And Mayor Patterson, did you have a comment?
Just a reminder that with these street closings and events in the Uptown area this year, we will also have a major detour on Richland Avenue. So, keep in mind that when these are taking place, most of the detouring will change to where you'll be directed up High Street, especially if there are closures of Court Street, as well as Congress, or West Union for the Arts and Music Festival. So, just keep that in mind, everybody, that there will be more detours to come.
Okay. All right. If no other questions or comments, all that will have a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2220 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area during the Ohio Brew Week events and the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 02220.
Second.
And this is just one of those sister ordinances that allows the events to do what they need to do, which is vending and peddling and soliciting.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 2220. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2320 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Sections 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the Uptown area, on Saturday, July 11th, 2020, and Saturday, July 18th, 2020, for Ohio Brew Week. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02320.
Second.
And this is just, just suspending our noise ordinance that we have, so that the opening and closing ceremonies of Ohio Brew Week can, can happen without a ticket.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2320. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2420 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a resurfacing project within the corporation boundary on US 33 and US 50. This is PID 84579, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02420.
Second.
And this is just a straightforward agreement with ODOT. They, they plan to do a paving project that's, they say approximately 2.33 miles long, and this is from the far end of Richland to just past Stimson Avenue on, mostly on Route 50, but also including a little bit of US, no, US 33 is also then a large portion of this too. So, this work will be happening in the summer, I believe in June, and of course, ODOT is responsible for 100% of all the costs on this paving project.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2420. Any comments or questions?
I do have one question.
Just a minute, Councilmember Reisner.
I'm just wondering if the administration could put a map on the city website to show the areas that's going to be impacted.
We can do that.
Okay.
Might be handy, given all the construction we've got around the area.
Councilmember Claude Felder.
I'm just curious, this is probably all, already all been thought through, but will the closure necessary to do this construction project on the highway affect the people who are already being affected by the closure of Richland Avenue for the pedestrian passageway? Is it, I mean, is that the part of the highway that they would use to get, to get to town?
I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that we're, it's not going to be full closure, but they'll have lane closures, so it'll just be drilled down to one lane while they're working on one or the other.
And we've still got interior streets to be able to use too, for the, all the routes. Okay. Okay, so, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance, the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2520 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a closed-circuit sewer television, known as CCTV, camera system for the Engineering and Public Works Department. Introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion for approval of ordinance 2520.
Second.
Thank you. And this was discussed in committee, and this authorizes our Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids, or enter into a contract with the lowest invest bidder, or use the city's cooperative purchasing program to purchase a closed-circuit sewer television camera system for use by Engineering and Public Works. And they are authorized to expend up to $90,000 from the sewer maintenance fund for this equipment.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2520. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Paul.
I said last time that we should put pictures on that, and people laughed. And people should not laugh, because last time I talked about something, it was serious. Personally, I think that even if people do not look at it, I think that more transparency is better, and then people may have a better understanding why we have problems that we have with our, you know, because we do have antiquated sewer systems, and who knows? Maybe we'll get hits with people who are really into antique sewer systems and have a confidence here. So, no, I'm serious, please. Interesting idea. I think it would be fun, and if it doesn't work, we don't have to do it again.
All right, thanks for the comment. Yes, Councilmember Katsas.
I just want a second, Members Paul's idea, because I just want to see it too.
Yeah, that's the real. I want to see it.
I'm sure engineering would be happy to have ride-alongs.
Yeah.
With the camera?
Mayor Patterson.
That's bad.
I think that's fine. You used an interesting phrase, "fun." I don't know how fun it is.
I know. Educational.
It is educational. That is true.
Okay.
I'm a planner. You don't know exactly what is fun with a planner, so, thank you.
I think there was a motion and second.
There was a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Now, we'll move on to ordinances for second reading. And we generally, unless there is a motion to suspend, we read the title so that it's been read in the public for the required, one of the required three times. So that's why you'll hear me primarily just reading the titles tonight. Ordinance 2820 is an ordinance closing certain streets in Uptown Athens on Friday, June 19th, and Saturday, June 20th, 2020, for the Brick Cycling Event. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas. And if no questions or comments, I'll move on to the next one. 2920 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1819 to increase the authorized appropriation and expenditure for construction and construction engineering services for the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway Project, Project Number 311. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas. No questions. 3020 is the next one. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with IPS Group, Inc., known as IPS, to provide parking technology and related services for the Division of Parking Services, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Katsas. No questions or comments. The next one is 3120. That's an ordinance amending the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance and amending ordinance 10418, authorizing design services for the wastewater treatment plant, dewatering project number 320. Introduced by Councilmember Grace. The next ordinance, if no questions or comments, is ordinance 3220. And this is an ordinance amending ordinance 2819, authorizing design engineering of the Stimson Avenue Project, Number 315. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell. We'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 3420 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement boiler heating system for the Athens Community Center. Introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, this is an ordinance that we discussed in committee, and I, I think will be a significant improvement because of the increase in efficiency of the new boiler system. As a reminder, our, our current system, which was the original one placed in the community center, is an 81% efficient system, and the replacement will be 97% efficient. As far as the details, this does require appropriating $12,000 from the unappropriated balance, and then the authorization of expenditure of up to $112,000.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
What will happen to the boiler that's being replaced? Is it going to be scrapped, or are we going to be able to sell any parts of it to recoup any costs?
I don't know.
I don't know, Councilmember Reisner. I can certainly check into that. It's an interesting question, but I don't have an answer to.
You never know. There might be something solvable there.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? All right. Ordinance 3520 is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, this is something that we did discuss in committee, and this authorizes our Service Safety Director to enter into a one-year contract with the Washington County Commissioners that allows us to house prisoners at the Washington County facility according to the terms of the contract included, and the contract would go into effect April 1st of 2020.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 3620 is an ordinance accepting a certificate of registration from Horizon Telecom, Inc., for use of a city's right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, President. We talked about this last week, the various different utilities and providers go through this process so that they can use our right-of-way and follow the rules and procedures that we require. They have shown all the necessary paperwork has been filled out, and the necessary bonding has been done. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 3720 is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, August 15th, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM for the Athens County, for the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. And we had, we had discussion of this last week at committee, and so this is the, the event that has been put on, I believe it might be in its third year, with, that is done by AMAC, so our, this is a, this is a city, city event, city-sponsored event. It impacts Union Street, West Union Street, between Court and Congress on Saturday, August 15th.
Okay. And AMAC is the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. Okay, thanks. All right, any comments or questions? All right. Ordinance 3820 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 3, 13.04.10, unnecessary noise on Union Street and contiguous property to Union Street on August 15th, 2020, for the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival.
President Isley, thank you. Yes, so this is, this is just suspending the noise ordinance because they do have a stage and live music at this, at this event. And I will mention that I did have a communication with the, with one of the promoters that works on, on this, and he's, he's hoping that next year that the, that the ordinances could be rolled out even a little bit sooner. My understanding from administration is that they will be working on the street closures, maybe more in the fall time next year. And so, the, and the reason for this mostly is because there's a, he can't reserve the stage until the ordinance is passed. So by the time it hits April, he would, you know, he would like to have a little bit more, more time to get that reservation done. So, I like the direction that the city's been going in, and I, and I like that we've already, it sounds like that's already going to happen for next year as we continue to tune up this, this format. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ordinance 3920 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, August 15th, 2020, during the Athens Arts and Music Festival. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. This is just the, the final of three ordinances that will allow this, this event to happen as they do, they do set up a different, different artists set up and do, do sell their, sell their wares, so.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? Ordinance 4020 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal local let, let, local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Stimson Avenue between State and Grant Streets. This is Project Number 315, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I introduce this ordinance on behalf of the Transportation Committee. This is standard agreement between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation in order for the city to reconstruct Stimson Avenue in 2021. And this agreement allows the city to receive up to $2,126,815 from ODOT for the project as part of the Small City Program. Okay, thank you.
Any comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to ordinance 4120. This is an ordinance amending the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance and introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to read ordinance 4120. The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance, 13019, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $3,000 to parking garage fund, 730.718 TC 600 for transfer to pay debt, and $3,252 to FEMA fund, 588.580 TC 600, for a grant transfer, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance is also amended to decrease and increase the following appropriations. Decrease general fund, parking enforcement, 101.718 TC 500, by $130,000 for parking meter lease payments. The city purchased these parking meters outright, so we can decrease that amount from the general fund. Also, decrease the tourism fund, other administrative, 212.120 TC 300, by $7,000 transient guest tax payment to the ACC VB, the Visitors Bureau, which was overbudgeted. And then decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The auditor is also hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer, from FEMA fund 588 to general fund 101, the amount of $3,252. FEMA Fund 588 to General Fund 101, the amount of $3,252, as well as the Parking Garage Fund 730 to the Parking Garage Debt Fund 733, in the amount of $164,000. The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance is further amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance, the sum of $3,252, to General Fund Fire 101 208 TC 500 for fire department turnout gear, and increasing the set appropriations by the said amount. The Parking Garage Debt Funds that were this ordinance appropriates is to pay the debt on the parking garage for the work that we have done two jobs ago, or one job ago. Not the most recent painting and improvements to the parking garage, but some of the infrastructure changes, including the, the two new elevators. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thanks. Any other quest, any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 4220, an ordinance amending ordinance 2720, authorizing the auditor to enter into a contract with Creative Microsystems, Inc., known as CMI, to upgrade software used by city departments. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have discussed this at committee. We have discussed this further at council. This is a necessary software upgrade for the city financial systems. We need to amend, to appropriate as well as to expend the $175,000 contract with CMI. And that's what this amended ordinance does. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 4320 is an ordinance implementing a plan for interim Service Safety Director due to military deployment of the current Service Safety Director. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have discussed this plan at committee and in various other public meetings at the, at the city level. And I think it's very important that we understand what is coming up for the next 15 months or so in the city of Athens. So I want to be sure to, to read this very important ordinance. Whereas the current Service Safety Director, Andrew Brian Stone, is a Colonel in the Ohio National Guard and United States Army, and is in command of the 16th Engineer Brigade. And whereas the 16th Engineer Brigade is being mobilized into active federal service under Title 10 of the United States Code in order to complete a mission to defend the interests of the United States of America in the central command area of responsibility. And whereas a temporary Service Safety Director is necessary for continuity of city operations. And whereas Thomas Pyle, Chief of Police, has the full faith and confidence of the city administration, and serving in both capacities temporarily is not a conflict under Ohio law, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, that Police Chief Tom Pyle shall be compensated with a temporary pay increase to $51.87 per hour, this is a 10% increase, during the period when serving as both Chief of Police and Service Safety Director. Chief Pyle's salary will be paid from the mayor's budget while serving in this position. Police Captain Ralph Harvey shall be compensated with a temporary pay increase to $44.35 per hour, also a 10% increase, during the period when serving as both Captain of Police and Acting Department Head of the Police Department. This ordinance is temporary and will sunset upon the return of Andrew Stone to active status with the city of Athens, or at the pleasure of the mayor, but no later than August 31st, 2021. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? Sounds like a good plan, and we thank Andrew Stone for his service.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Ordinance 4420 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13119's staffing levels, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is connected to the change in the Service Safety Director between Mr. Stone and Mr. Pyle. And this is amending our staffing ordinance for the Police Department to decrease the number of patrol officers from 20 to 19, and increasing the number of lieutenants from five to six. As has been discussed at committee, this will not decrease the number of police officers that are on patrol in the city of Athens. So there will be no change there. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, any questions or comments? Okay. If not, then we'll move on to announcements and other business. And we do have a few items, the first of which is a motion to accept the auditor's December 2019 and January 2020 financial reports.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of these auditor's reports, the financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. And then we would also entertain a motion to accept the January 2020 credit card transactions.
So moved.
Accept.
Okay. And so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that motion has been accepted as well. And at the end of our meeting, we always have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative, oh, Mayor Patterson?
Something I failed to mention under communications, so I'm going to take the opportunity now. That's okay with council?
Sure.
I have received several voicemails from a concerned citizen here in Athens about the flag flying on American Towers' cell tower beside the water, wastewater treatment plant. We have been trying to stay in communication with American Tower. It's difficult. It's been difficult. It's a Verizon, Verizon slash American Tower. They claim that the, the hoisting mechanism is inoperable, and the flag is tattered, and we recognize that, as well as the flag appearing to fly at half mast consistently. We have identified a way through Title 43, which is the telecommunications chapter or title under code, to where they will be, have been issued a notice of violation, which does come with a penalty. And we will continue to work through things as best we can with American Tower. American Tower, to say the least, has been difficult to work with. We would like to take over a level of control over that ability to replace, hoist up or lower the flag as well as replace the flag as needed. And hopefully we can get there. But again, I want council to know that I have been, received multiple voicemails from someone who's, who's upset, rightfully so, rightfully so. We have little control at this point in the game over that tower. And I don't think a lot of people recognize that it is a cell tower, but it is owned by a company that is not the city of Athens. So hopefully we can come to a resolution over that. But again, we do have a mechanism in place to issue notice of violation under Title 43, and that has been done.
And I do understand also that the part has been, the part of the difficulty was the part was not available. And so it's on back order. But of course, that might be what you're hearing. I, I see the look on your face.
That's what we're being told.
Okay, thank you.
We've heard that for several, several months.
For several months. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other, and I should, before we proceed with the opportunity for citizens to speak, any other announcements? I'm sorry, I forgot to, to ask. We will be having committee meetings next week. I know, I do know that we have one item for committee of the whole to consider, and likely transportation, finance and personnel.
I imagine, yes.
Likely, maybe planning. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So now we, we have a moment for opportunity for citizens to speak if they would like to on any topic. You have three minutes if you would like. Is there anyone wanting to speak? Okay. If not, then motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and second for adjournment. We're eager tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, for those opposed. We are adjourning at 7:38 p.m. Thank you very much.